And Sandy won't be here this evening. So... I'm gonna get my paperwork together here. What's that? All right, Jim Schrader here, James Kaufman here, Cindy Reide, Kim Sears Haker, Isaiah Crowell, and I'm here. We have a quorum. Oh, no, it's my duty to pay the attention actually of most of it, so, but thank you. All right, I have proof of whole thing, will you join me for the questions?
What do we do this through the line in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we approve the agenda, we need to strike item nine D, two and three. Under personnel. As well as item eleven, executive session, item C. So, do I have the motion to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Reposed? All right. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January eighteenth. Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Jim?
Yes.
James? Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. In the interest of time, I'll go behind Mark.
Two things, Super Kids Foundation gathering next Saturday, Sunday, oops, Sunday, January thirty-first, seven AM, three PM. Jim has tickets, I have tickets, you can get tickets also in your after-schools. And I mean, it's a great day of professional development today for our staff, so, thank you.
Cool. All right, facilities and transportation.
I think most of it will be covered in the meetings.
Okay. All right. Cool. Anybody sign off?
No.
Jim?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Intervention presentation.
All right, well, we just wanted to take a few minutes just to share with you the intervention program that we have in place in the classmate's whole district. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Josie Gecher, the reading specialist.
And I'm Jill Wadey, the interventionist, both math and reading.
And I'm Andrea Visser, the middle school interventionist, both math and reading as well.
And Jordan Redley is not here, I told her to stay home with the weather, she lives farther away, so she won't be here with us tonight, but she is also our interventionist at Black Earth School. So, our vision with intervention is to provide effective interventions to meet the needs of all students through early and scientific-based interventions and critical system planning. That's kind of the vision of this program. And the flow chart of how this sort of works, we start at the very top of the classroom, which is considered our tier one, and we have differentiated universal instruction, that's kind of where it all starts. If students are struggling in the classroom, they would move out to tier two, which is considered our title one groups, our intervention classes at the middle school. If the students continue to struggle, then we develop an RTI plan, and that's considered tier three. And during that process, we deliver two intensive interventions. So, you can see it's a multi-tiered process, both dealing with the academic side, but also the behavior side, which we've done a lot of work with over this past year with PBIS. Again, tier one's that core instruction that's meeting the needs of about eighty percent of our students within the classroom and differentiated instruction. If our students are struggling still, about fifteen percent of them sort of fall in that tier two category, that's our small group, our title one groups, our intervention classes at the middle school. And then if they continue to struggle still from there, they move on to an RTI plan, which is about five percent of our students. Currently in our district, approximately, at Black Earth, we have approximately twenty to thirty kids that receive intervention in reading, and about ten to fifteen in math. At Mesa Elementary, it's about even reading and math, about fifteen to twenty students in reading and fifteen to twenty students in math receive interventions. And then at the middle school, this year particularly, we had more needs in math, so we have about twenty students or so in math interventions and about ten students in reading. So, that, those numbers fluctuate a little bit, I would say generally at Black Earth, we tend to service our reading kids a little bit more, just to get that early intervention and start them off on the right foot, right way. So, how do they get into these programs? So, entrance into interventions, students are placed in the program based on the neediest kids. The neediest of our students that fall below district benchmarks. So, we screen all of our students at the beginning of the year with multiple tests. We monitor that data frequently throughout the year, and students really only qualify for the program if they're falling below that benchmark. So, we have certain, each test has a certain benchmark level that they have to meet, and if they fall below that, that's when we might consider them for a particular intervention. We also look at teacher recommendation, test scores, and then parents also give their approval for those programs. In order to exit from interventions, students must be scoring above that benchmark level or completed the intervention program and are performing at their grade level. This is just a screenshot of EduClima, which is a data warehouse that we purchased, I think, two years ago now. This is our second year using it. So, you, I don't, you can't see the students' names there, but this would be an example of a kindergarten class, or at least part of the kindergarten classes, if you scroll down, it goes all the way down. But you can see that the scores in the red are kids who perform below the benchmark, the scores in the orange are at benchmark, the scores in the blue are above benchmark, the ones in the green are also above benchmark, they just score them a little bit different because it's a, on the state test, that's a child's test. But we look at this data and we can see that, you know, kids who have four or five red areas in there, those are kids that we're concerned about, those are kids that wouldn't qualify for the program. Kids who have like all orange and yellow and blue would not qualify for the program. But it's just a warehouse to keep all of our data and sort of see our students a little bit more closely.
And we can see them over time, too. Yeah, it's a nice thing about this.
About this program. And it goes, it keeps all of our data K-12, too, all of our SMART boards, AET scores, math scores, all of that data is housed in this system.
The title one intervention at the elementary school, the students receive small group instruction at their level, three days, but most typically five days a week. They're pulled out of their classrooms during the targeted support time or during a guided reading or math time. They are not taken out when there's core teaching. And that works well for us at the elementary level. Reading program, we are using the Level Literacy Intervention, awesome books, kids are attending well, it's going well. So, thanks for supporting us, we be all a lot. And the math program, intervention materials that go with the Go Math series, the series that we adopted this year, that's going well.
Intervention programs at the middle school, Andrea will talk about them.
Intervention at the middle school started last year, and to kind of start off, the students enter the program by talking with the staff, talking with the parents, looking at their test scores. They come into my room during one class period per day for one semester. Once that semester is coming to a close, we review their data, kind of talk with their teachers, how are they doing? Kind of talk with their parents, how do you think they're doing? Do they seem to be improving with you at home? Do they seem to understand their homework? Also, in the classrooms, kind of see, okay, how are they progressing? Do they, you know, are they raising their hand more? Kind of doing a little bit more in-depth understanding of how that student is growing. We also look at their test scores and how they're growing with the intervention program as a whole. Along with at the elementary school, at the middle school, they're pulled from their non-core classes as well. We have a target support time, and we also have multiple different times in the day where different grades are in specials or have PE options that we work with them at during that time. The reading programs that we use at the elementary school are the LLI program, or we also have the Reading Plus program. And then for math, we use the Big Ideas Intervention Materials, which is the program that we adopted this year for math, and we also have the Spectrum Math Intervention Materials or Intervention Books.
All right, big question of the night, what is RTI? It's identifying and providing high-quality instruction and research-based interventions that are matched to students' needs, measuring the rate of improvement over time to make important educational decisions. And then we, as educators, we use the ongoing student performance data to determine if an intervention is working. If it's not, then it's time for us to do something different. And I think through the years that we've worked together, we have gotten really good at keeping data and, and making it work for us to see what, what we need to do differently. Tier three, intensive interventions. Intervention one, it would be very individualized, a very small group, if we had two kids in there, they'd have the same needs. It would be daily for thirty minutes or more, and it would be at least ten weeks, up to fourteen, could be longer. We are progress monitoring weekly using the AIMS web-based program. AIMS stands for Academic Improvement Measurement Systems.
Yes.
And we use that, it has become a wonderful tool for us to use. And intervention two, it would be very individualized, like one-on-one, meets daily for thirty minutes or more, ten to fourteen weeks, and we progress monitor weekly with the AIMS. And we are doing that right now.
We have, currently have about five kids in our RTI program this year, we have just finished tier three intensive intervention number two with several of those students, so we are in the process of meeting with parents to determine where we're to go from, from there with those students. So, intensive interventions.
No.
Intensive interventions, at the elementary level, we use the LLI as well, but with an intensive approach, meaning one-on-one with the student. We might have a specific reading intervention plan that's tailored specifically to that student, using a scientifically-based research intervention. At the middle school, they use Reading Plus and LLI. Our interventions for math are the Voyager Math Program, the Alex Program, which is a peer rise program, and/or a specific intervention plan tailored to the student's needs. So, this process is a, is a very formal process. We begin by meeting as a team to decide, hey, this student is not making progress with the interventions that we're giving them, we would like to look into this a little bit further and intense by those interventions, and really progress monitor to see, are these interventions working? Are they making? Parents are notified at each stage of this process, and the intervention team meets. After the first intervention, we meet again, we look at the data, we determine, are they making progress, are they not making progress? Do we want to continue with this intervention, or do we want to try something different? And then we move on to the next intervention, go through that whole process again, progress monitoring weekly, then we meet again, again, parents are notified, until we finally make a decision of whether or not we're going to move forward with a formally evaluation for special education. This is just an example of one of the ways in which we look at, look at the data, so this is happening to be a student, over a course of twelve weeks, we have data points each week from our AIMS web program. The, the top line that you see up there with the red squares, that's the twenty-fifth percentile benchmark, where we'd like to see all of our students be performing above that. If they're performing below that, that's usually an indicator that maybe they are special education, or they might have special education needs. And then you can see all the blue dots, those are each data points, and that line that goes through that is called a trend line. If that line were to continue, you could see that those two lines would eventually go further and further apart, which means that intervention's not working for that student. So, then we would either try something else, or if, if they've done two intensive interventions, and this is what we're seeing, then it might mean that we wouldn't refer them for a special education evaluation. So, all of this put together, all these principles and the components of this system are about building a better support system for our students. It allows us to think a little bit differently about how we're servicing our kids, we have different kinds of conversations about them, and many times we do something different with them. Our focus is on what are the problems, what's causing it, and what kind of solutions can be provided for the student. So, what questions do you have for us?
You are a wonderful audience. You just want to get out of here, because it's not going to end.
But we did want to say thank you for supporting our students, not only giving us the manpower and the resources of, you know, the people to service these students, but also providing us with the intervention material that, high-quality materials that we can use with our students to help move them forward. So, we appreciate your support in that area. Thank you.
For perspective, Josie won't say this, but 2008, it was basically Josie and Jill, only at the elementary levels. And now, you know, again, the support of the board, and I believe we're seeing successes. You know, we now have support, one additional person at the elementary school, Josie is freed up to help staff a little bit, but also when they have somebody at the middle school, too.
Yes, very much.
Do we oversee the program going more into high school?
You know, we have talked about it. You know, it starts at the elementary level because we really wanted to get them early, you know? Our middle, our element, Mesa Elementary is where we tend to see most of our RTI kids, because at that point, they've been in intervention long enough for us to say, okay, this is not working for them. And so, usually that's the stage, third, fourth and fifth grade, where we might refer a student for an RTI planning, sort of look further into that. And then we added on the middle school this year. You know, we have some, you know, universal intervention that we provide for students at the high school level with some differentiated math and English classes for students that are struggling, so that's kind of where we started.
And then we start trying to find fits for the student and matching up with their interests in a more traditional sense. But also giving other opportunities, and that's where our policy deserves a lot of credit, which plays a role too, and having, you know, connecting the students, finding their interests at the high school, and then getting them to walk the process.
Usually, students in the RTI process have been identified by the time they get to, almost usually in middle school, it's actually rare to get a student at the middle school that has not been identified yet of, of having a, you know, special needs. So, at that point, that process, we don't, we need a lot of it at the high school level because most of the time they're identified before them, so. Other questions? Thank you.
All right. HSR. You're up, bud.
Terrific. Good to see you right again. Got a couple handouts for you. What we've done is taken another kind of broad brush look at some options for you. And again, all this is meant to be is to start, you guys thinking and all of us thinking, kind of, almost just a starting point, you know, that is going to be meant to generate some discussion amongst the community, from everybody, over time. And again, remember, we looked at kind of a, we took a big broad look at the buildings, of course, and, and that was a good starting point, that we still use that booklet quite often to this day, and I know Marx used it quite a bit too, so, in doing some planning for, I want to keep one of them to myself though, so I know that I gave them. So, so again, what you're going to see in that diagram, the diagrams that you got there are on these boards. Again, I've got on the diagrams a conceptual plan that talks about some of the things that we thought about alongside the issues, some of the goals that we have in planning for potentially a school with all kids under one roof. Also on that plan is some just broad brush costs associated with that particular plan. And I should add, those costs are just associated with what particular additions we might be considering. Now, I didn't get into simplifying any of the remodeling pieces that we talked about or could have talked about. So, so again, looking at and understanding now that all three of your buildings contain roughly, I think it was about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square feet of space, okay? And remember that some of the analysis that we went through before regarding square feet per student and all those things associated with it, we did some cost analysis of, of looking at operating costs, if everything were on one site versus every, versus everything on two sites, you know, some of those things that we studied in the past. So, now, again, this kind of looking at, the first one that we described and talked about was doing an addition of, I guess, of about forty thousand square feet of space on this end of the building, adding to the middle school wing, basically. But, but let me back up a little bit. I think the essence of everything we were trying to do was creating a K-12 facility that's going to function very well for all the kids, K through twelve, with defining kind of a hub of the school, if you will, a hub, for lack of a better term, kind of a core of the building, that organizing element that the building really needs and desires. So, so that's what we were trying to do here with this, with these plans. And you'll see the darker tan are the additions that we were looking at, seventeen classrooms up on this side, gymnasium here, and then eight classrooms perhaps down the high school wing. So, what this is telling us is that there's room on this site to do some of the expansion that would require to think and consider about bringing everybody under one roof, K-12 school. And then along with that, we talked about, well, what if we do some remodeling in this front entryway of creating a new common space cafeteria that's closer to the front entryway, modify the kitchen, which needs, which needs some updates anyway, so moving the kitchen to a different location than it is now that's going to satisfy their needs a little bit better, getting an office space located near the front door, all those things that create better safe, secure environments, along with expanding the building to, to meet the needs for the kids. So, with the addition up here, we're looking at about forty thousand square feet, a high school classroom wing could be up to about eighty-six hundred ballpark numbers. So, you see the associated costs. I've used just a ballpark cost of two-hundred square, two dollars per square foot right now, just to, just to have a number. I know we shared with you a while back, a more of a breakdown process that that had classrooms at a hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-eighty ounces square foot, whatever those numbers were. And of course, things like auditoriums might be a little more cost per square foot, but so in this case, I just use a round number of two-hundred dollars per square foot, just to give us a baseline. Also, within this framework, we talked about a new gymnasium, expanding simply the addition of the existing gym, and then therefore enhancing the front door, the entry, and the lobby, making that front door more visible from not only the parking lot, but also even the height, again, for safety and security, all those reasons. So, so this is, you know, again, a baseline concept that we talked about before. You asked us to take a look, quick look at another concept of maybe squaring that a lot with the addition. And all of our concepts are the same, we wanted to find a hub in the school, and that's down here. We want to create a major new significant entryway that's going to be user-friendly, enhanced, and, and safer, and more secure. Moving the offices from where they're located now, so it gets that closer to that front door. Adding the classroom wing on the top of the drawing, certainly adding another gymnasium, and then adding the, or not the cafeteria, but the auditorium perhaps as an option, so that those two functions are right off the front door, so, again, you can come in, use the school, it's more community user-friendly, you can come in and use the building, get at those more community-oriented spaces very easily, be able to shut down the rest of the school fairly easily, just strategically located doors and things like that. Again, this space, we're adding quite a bit more space because we've increased the amount of corridors, I'll call them, special ed spaces, we've got a few more restrooms in here, same number of classrooms, but we basically filled in this courtyard, if you will.
Where you needed that green space.
Yeah, that green space that we, you know, we talked about that, and so we've added, and in two weeks, we've added space to the, to the addition. So, this space up here, counting the auditorium and the gym, all of this new space is about seventy-two thousand square feet of space, and then, and that equates to roughly that fourteen million dollar margin. And then the high school classrooms, if we added eight, the eight that we could fit in on the backside there, another about one-point-seven million or so. So, so again, the points being, I guess, the main, you know, the points being, we've got space on the site to do some things like we're talking about. We've, with the, with the planning and work you've done on the parking lot already and the traffic flow, that certainly works very well with whatever perhaps you might do new here or remodel. And then, so, so all that is kind of coming to our master plan that we were starting off with initially. The third scheme, option C, is basically the same thing as option, option B, except we wanted to see, okay, how much more could we expand the site if we needed more space for classrooms? And so, what we're suggesting is that portion of this wing could be designed for adding a second floor out to it if we wanted to, whether it's now or later, and certainly that could be done. And again, the, the main things that we had to consider there are, we'll need an elevator because the elevator that's currently in the building isn't in the correct location to satisfy the needs here. And then we'll need a couple of stairways. And then also, in order to add a second floor, but beef up the footages a little bit, beef up the roof structure a little bit. And some of those things could be done now, in an early, you know, in a one-story construction scheme, and add, you know, ten years from now, or twenty years from now, whether that need be. Or you could, if you wanted to, obviously, add a second floor at this stage, you'd be able to. So, now this scheme with the second floor, I've expanded the classrooms and some of those other special areas, getting to a little over a hundred thousand square feet. That, in combination with the eight classrooms on the high school wing, gets us a total building here, and about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet, which obviously is still a little less than what you have now in three buildings. So, it tells me you really wouldn't need to do this right now, you don't need the space, and that's the whole premise of, I think, what we're looking at. But, again, what it shows us is that you've got the ability to get basically all the square footage you have now in your three remote building locations under, in one-on-one site. That's, I guess, the, that's the means for this exercise.
So, one of the things I summed up is for an extra forty thousand dollars, you can make it, so you could put a second story on it. could put a second story on it.
I think that's a fair number to use, yeah. Yeah. You know, again, it just means enlarging the footages a little bit and some of the roof structure, not a huge, not a huge.
Okay, well, my question is and was, you've got 17 classroom numbered classrooms, I'm not talking about the stuff in the middle.
Right.
Just 17 classrooms.
Right.
What if you made that nine and put nine more above it? Which is, to me, what the two-story option question was, which is, give us how many classrooms we need, two stories instead of one.
Okay, well, assuming you need 17 classrooms.
Right.
Assuming you need 17 classrooms, so what you're saying is do nine on one floor and then above.
Yes.
In my mind, because of the building, that building footprint is so small, you know, of course, as soon as we do that, we have to add the elevator stairs, okay? And because of that building footprint being so small, that the efficiency of adding the elevator stair right now would not be a prudent thing to do, simply because that's a cost we may never have to do. You know, we may never need that stair or elevator. So, I guess I would say that your most effective would be to do it all on one footprint, one level, and, and plan for some, might, you know, the ability to add, but that's minor compared to an elevator and two stairways. If that makes sense to you? Is that, okay. That's my thinking, my line of thinking there. The smaller the building is that you're doing two-story, the less sense that it makes to make it two-story, okay? If that makes sense to you? I think it does.
Plus, it takes away one of the reasons with the one-story town, it, it takes away the potential of additions.
Yeah.
Other than, other than creating more, taking more land.
Yeah, exactly. If we built the building this big only two-story and we need space, we can always add this two-story again, and that works fine. We'll take the same amount of land that we're doing now, but, but it would be more costly to build a small two-story building here and then another two-story building here than it would be to build one-story building here and then add a second level down the road. That would be more costing, my mind, because of the inefficiency of, when you build a two-story building, you usually do it because you've got such a huge building that you built, and it's more efficient, the bigger the building, the less efficient, the smaller the building.
So that'd be similar to like a ranch house in a two-story.
Yep.
At a certain point in time, I think the old, after 1600, 15 square feet, then the question to the homeowner or the builder is?
Do you go two-story? Yeah, yeah. And again, this is nowhere near big enough to justify a small footprint like that going two-story, unless we were limited on site. And here, I think we got the site to be able to do that. Now, you know, Jim, when the Jim brought up in the other meeting, the fact of there's a drainage way back there, we know that, there's some, some DNR things that we'll have to do to, to work out the details of this, okay? So that might impact us a little bit in some of the decisions we make on the shape of it, the location of it, whether it's two-story or one-story, you know, some of that might even have some variation.
Because in Wisconsin, it's, you have to replace what you remove.
Yeah.
And there's other regulations when you're adding to that parking lot if you disturb more than an acre.
Yeah.
And we're also closer, closer to crease, so there's more screw.
What else? One other questions you guys have, I know there's very broad brush things here that we're talking.
I mean, the other thing you added was that those rooms right above the auditorium, you said you made music and art right above the auditorium.
Right.
Yeah, you made music and art, so that would free up the rooms that are currently music and art, which are really big rooms that we could potentially transition into what we're saying, science room or whatever.
Yeah, it's a good point. If we, we do the auditorium, it's always good to get the music and art right next to that stage. So we're suggesting that comes up here, is easily accessible by all the kids, and we're still cognizant of the fact that we want separation of some of the lower elementary, upper elementary kids. So that's, that's no problem, we can do that. Whether this becomes, you know, this becomes lower elementary, upper, like, you know, how will that work out is yet to be determined? But then that opens up these classrooms, like Jim was saying, or some STEM rooms or other kinds of educational opportunities that you, you want to pursue.
This doesn't include, it systematically touches moving the middle school, high school office, but this cost does not include the kitchen change.
Yep, yeah, all of this cost of the remodeling that's in here, whatever is done in here, you see some of these classrooms, I know we talked about doing some enhancements to those classrooms in the light, you know, here, but I haven't, I haven't accounted for any of that, those numbers up here yet, okay? Because I wasn't sure really how far we want to go with that stuff. And I think once we get the community involved and discussions with the community and the staff, they'll start to form a place, how far we take on that.
So basically, we're talking $20 million with a single floor?
Yeah, it depends on the ingredients, but yeah, it could, it could approach that.
No, 15 with a single, 20 with a two-story. You add stuff, I'm not going to disagree with the base. B is one-story, not including the kitchen.
And not including a few other things.
Right, remodeling.
Yep.
And with the eight classrooms at 1.7 and the kitchen and other things, you're talking $20 million.
Right, but I would, you know, going back to our previous conversations, we were never talking about adding middle school classrooms at this time. Now, you may want to, but that's just not a potential expansion point. I guess you're correct if you add those two.
And I think, keep in mind that these are just meant for, you know, broad brush ideas, you know. I, I'm going to say it could be anywhere from, you know, 14 to 20, or, you know, it could even be 12 to 16, you know? There's a range in there, I think, that we can determine as a group on how far, what makes sense, how far you want to go. Because now, now all of a sudden, once you start talking money, they've got to start balancing act of function versus dollars and all of those kinds of things start to come into play, like we started to suggest.
One of the things I'd like to know, I don't know if this is the conversation for this, is, has there been any talk about the economic impact on losing schools in, like in the towns, how that would affect the towns, like home values, things like that?
It's been said, it's never been studied.
Right, I don't know if there's.
I mean, I can talk to people out there that would say this is what happens when consolidations have occurred, but the concept isn't as much of a loss because it's not closing, so I think there's a difference. I understand what you're saying, it's not in the village proper, but on the other hand, the school, you're not traveling further away or to adjacent, you know, like in a consolidation situation.
And I think one village loses more if you close one site and leave the other site open. I think the village that loses its school, I think loses, so that's why I've never been in favor of that.
And that's where you're somewhat unique. I mean, we work in school districts that have three communities and two of them, and there's a school in each community, and two of them lose their school, and everything's moved to one community. A little different here where you move into a central location, perhaps.
Like, the, the best case study that I can think of, you know, practically speaking, is just, is Dodgeland. They were a, a community more like River Valley, and that's where they had small schools in their townships, and they made a decision late 90s, early 2000s to go to a K-12 complex. Again, that made, I've talked about it before, I could have called and talked to the board president and superintendent some last week, but there, that, that would be a, a parallel comparison where, like you asked, I mean, in Lowell, which is one of the communities, there's still a business, there's businesses that are there that are still running.
Where does that work?
With Dodgeland.
Okay, yeah.
We did something that didn't know.
Sure, oh, no.
If you want to do that, you're ready.
Yeah, no.
I can do that.
It's a good point to discuss, talk through and understand.
And I, I could ask them if they studied other, other districts at that time. Board presidents of business owners of smaller communities.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything for Brad?
We've got one here. We do, and, and again, all the work we've done so far with you is just getting ideas on paper.
Okay.
Right or wrong, you know? Now we, now the real test comes in to play where we need to get the public involved and with you guys. And we've got a little, we've done a lot of these, you guys want some of these? We've done a lot of referendums for schools throughout the state of Wisconsin. It's all about community involvement. You guys are making tough decisions, but it's important to get the community involved, get feedback, get input. And what, what, the way I look at it is, like, for me, I'm kind of guiding the process a little bit with you guys, now you guys are going to have to guide the process a little bit with the community and get that involved. Now, we've got a, kind of a package here that we've put together, we use this routinely for school districts, and this first sheet is kind of the key. All it is, is just a little roadmap of things that we've done, and that's helped the success of that community involvement happen, okay? And there's, there's six steps here, and, and again, it's just a roadmap, we can deviate from this roadmap a little bit and still get to the same endpoint. And, but it's just meant to be kind of a guide for, almost a generic guide, if you will, for school districts throughout the state. Every school district's a little different, we understand that, so we need to tweak this accordingly to cater to you guys, and that's where you guys got to help us. But it all, it all revolves around community involvement and from step one, even though step one says define a problem and assemble a team. The team is the community, and some, usually it's a task force or some kind that gets kind of picked and formulated from not only you guys, but also the community. Facility assessment, master plan, we started to do some of that already with you. Subcommittees, you know, we started defining criteria and creating options, we started some of that, and we kind of backtracked a little bit to get the community involvement. Step four is that whole, it's, it's really more intense community engagement, but that's where our task force that we defined early on comes into play. And then we continue to evaluate the results and evaluate the input that we're getting from the community and you guys, and until we get to a, a solution that everybody feels comfortable, the surveys that could be done, all kinds of different things that we can do to help the process, help facilitate this process. And really, it takes all of that stuff, you know, it depends on how much time you want to invest, but certainly it could be, you know, a few months to several months. We've done them in two months, we've done them in, you know, a year, so it just depends on how, what's, whatever way it feels comfortable. So that's, in a sense, kind of in a nutshell, and then there's a lot more detail in there that we'll use, I don't intend to over hold this tonight, but certainly another good resource for us as we, as you move forward, go to, to your planning.
Now, if I want to add to two other research questions that I was asked, I spoke with Bear, the, at the convention, so on the second page or the fourth, page number four, are the 10 million and 15 million dollar scenarios. The one thing I would point out, based on annual growth, 1.8%, which, which is the average for the state, the county, specifically Wisconsin heights, that's been a little slower. But, so for 10 million, the $200,000 home, that's $194 per year. For 15 million, it's 288. Of course, you can double, double 10 or two times and then figure out what 20 looks like too, just as a, as a perspective. But I pick those numbers not because they're goal numbers, but you can multiply or cut them in half, you know, some.
The number everybody looks at usually is, to compare districts, is the 97 cents on 10 million, 97 cents per, per thousand dollars evaluation. So, so again, on a, on a $100,000 home, that's, and that would be a $97 tax increase. Yeah, so, so the, kind of the bottom line is, what I'm reading here is roughly for every 5 million, it's going to cost about 50 cents per every thousand valuation. The state average, and I know which mill rate is now?
Like, we're pretty close to 12.
12, above 12, yeah. The state average is probably just a little less than 12, I'm guessing, and, so, yeah, it, it kind of gives a little baseline for everybody to feel, to feel for all this stuff. So, that's kind of where we are. Lots more to do here, I know, but this is a, the starting point for you, just to be thinking, and typically, you know, obviously, we got to get more at some point in time, you know, some, some districts will referendum with not even this much information. Some districts go to a referendum with maybe a little more information than this, not a lot more, but I would suggest that we probably want to meet with staff and do, do a lot of more refinement of certainly these numbers, certainly some of the planning, get some public feedback on some of the planning and some of the programming to, to really feel good that we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, that was, I guess the third question was, how are they sampling? Bear responded 100% survey, not, not by any referendum, no one, no one has done that for a referendum question. Doesn't mean you can't, but it's reported, not everybody else.
More appropriate method would be to do a survey of significant, not just a survey, monkey survey, but a survey that actually targets some of the needs and questions that we all gathered up to this point in time, and kind of targets, maybe some of the solutions that we're coming down to with. Here's a good example, we just did this at Dodge, and we went through the same process, met with, you know, some of the key folks, and we kind of started to do some preliminary planning, and we all thought that, well, looks like we want some significant STEM classroom additions, we want some enhancements to the gymnasium, and some of the academic areas, but, so we did all that, and ended up being about $30 million worth of work based on this kind of conceptual plan that we had. We did a, at that stage, then we did a survey, targeted a survey, and it came back that, oh, we really didn't, the, the community told us loud and clear that they didn't think we needed to do a gym at this time. So we took the gym out, some other, some of the key pieces, and now the referendum's down to 20, 20 million. So that survey really helped us, and now everybody's feeling pretty good that this referendum is on the path to a successful vote in, in April. We, we're working with a task force committee, committee of the public, with a couple of our members on it, and, and that's proven, we've worked with them since Thanksgiving time, or earlier, you know, last fall, I think, and that's proven to be a pretty iron plate, I'll say. Okay?
Okay.
Hope it's helpful. And again, if you have any other questions, you know, you'll keep loving.
Sounds good?
That it.
That's it, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
All right, curriculum, responsible action on civics assessment.
Well, as Amy's getting very anxious because of our canceled curriculum meeting last week, we're doing the work of the curriculum committee as a board.
Um, specific, sorry, every, 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 um, student in the state of Wisconsin needs to take the civics test, um, starting with, um, the current junior class. Um, and so we've decided, I met with Ann Kurzbaum, who, you know, is, and Trevor Snyder, who are the two social studies people in our high school. And, um, we decided that what we're going to propose is that we use a civic test that Madison created with class four. Um, he came to our I ninety-nine fifty-four meeting and presented it to us. Um, and there's about forty-sixty curriculum type people in that area. And, um, they spent, Madison spent a lot of time developing this. They went through and, and did all the proper test protocol and made sure that there were only so many ABCs and Bs and, um, and that all the questions were there. So it's a, it's a hundred point test, um, that's based on the test that, that anybody would take, um, given their citizenship. And so what we decided is we wanted to give it during the sophomore year when they take United States history. We'd like to give it at the end of first semester. Um, and then this year only the juniors are gonna have to take it as well. So as soon as we can get approved, whatever way we're going to do it, um, we would have the sophomores take it, they're prepared to take it, they're ready to take it, they're kind of waiting on us more or less. Um, and then we also arranged for Andy Cole has all the juniors. And so he has agreed to give the current junior class that test during his English class to definitely not disrupt him or taking them off from other classes and so forth. We would also provide for the junior class, because they haven't had Ann for a year, some after-school time and different things that they can study in order to, um, take their tests. Ann has done a similar test always and her students tend to do, I mean, everyone tends to pass. They only have to have sixty percent and Special Ed is exempt from it. So really, she has assured me that we don't have to have a lot of passing this. Um, you know, that's kind of, not a lot of trucks in her, but I, I do believe, you know, because of the way she's taught the class and prepared them and everything for it. So, um, that is what we were proposing. We kind of wanted to do it a little sooner than this, but it's okay. Um, and we would do it right here in February, um, as soon as we can. Um, and then students can retake it to make pass it, so they have plenty of time to pass it, uh, before they graduate. Um, and so, uh, we felt we had some differences at question points, um, when we were deciding this. Um, also, it's all computer graded, so the computer grades it all and, and, you know, it doesn't take much time to do that. And that, um, we, there are other options out there. Um, you could do, you can do any, basically anything, but you have to have a hundred questions or less. So you could do a project, um, you could do a take-home test and so on. But we really felt that this exam, um, Ann and Trevor looked at it, thought that it was well done, that the kids could pass it and that, um, it really is important that our students know, um, as participating citizens, participants in our community and our country, that they actually know that this is what we expect from, you know, people giving their citizenship. The people that actually are born here should be able to at least get sixty percent on their exam, um, either senior year. So what we're proposing is basically, um, that we do the test that Madison has created. We have access to it and it is computer graded and we would know right away who passed, who didn't. And also, those that didn't pass, we need to get their citizenship.
Does that, does that test have a name?
I think it's just...
Pardon me?
I think it's just the civics test.
I'll move down to it.
Yeah?
One question before you go over really quick. One question is that, when, when they make corrections, do they, or whether they retake the test, do they have to retake the entire test? Or just the sections that they missed? The entire test?
And I know you're anxious to get going while I read this, 'cause I told Ann I would. Um, it says, I cannot make it tonight, this was from Ann Kurzbaum. Um, but wanted to say that both Trevor and I completely support Amy's plan to go with a multiple choice test Madison has put out to be compliant with the new citizen test requirement. It is well written, very user-friendly, and will allow students to demonstrate an understanding of the concepts it's assessing. I'm hoping their, the recommendation will be accepted tonight. My students are very anxious to give the test a go.
That's all good.
All right.
When, when do they retake the test then?
We would just set, we would just set up, Ann would, Ann would...
Like, everybody walks in next Tuesday and retakes it?
We would just set that up, 'cause that, it's not necessarily, maybe, it depends on how they score. They do...
No, but I'm saying, logistically, if...
Logistically, it would be probably one, one or two times, the second time.
During school?
And then what, what, does Special Ed, does Special Ed require to pass it? They're required to take it, they're not required to pass it?
Move to a, the test is described by Amy.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jim?
Oh, okay. You're so fast.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Sam?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
What's that? Yes, you are. All right.
All right, I will, um, I gave you all packets, but I just gave you a lot of costumes ones. Um, and this was kind of, you know, guided by TCI to put out there with all of our figures and everything. Um, so if you turn to the second page, this is what came out in the, the paper. Um, and so what I did on the following page is just kind of trying to tune it down to what was in some texts. It's done and I asked them right now, 'cause right now they're not ranked in this big challenge part. So if you go to the third page, the next page, um, just to kind of highlight, um, I put the badger exam, grades three through eight, what the state average was for, um, how many were position advanced in the state and where Wisconsin Heights scored in that and then the difference. So you can see in the badger exam, we did very, very well. Um, two grades that did exceptionally well were grade five and grade six in the English Language Arts and grade four and five in the math. Um, grade five seems to be strong, extremely strong in both areas, but if you look at the math, we're twenty-four point seven percent higher than the state average. So, um, we did score very well, um, throughout there, um, and above the state overall. Uh, so if you turn the page then, what I did is I took all of the scores from the Dane County schools and I averaged them for grades three through eight and kind of ranked us based on the averages from how they did at each grade level. And so Wisconsin Heights did seven in that ranking. And as you can see, all of the schools above us, there are large schools, um, and so far, for the exception of Cambridge, um, Cambridge's fairly close there. But again, Littleton Cross Plains and Monmouth, these two games attacked. Um, but we did, um, fairly well in the, the Dane County as well. Um, and that was for math. And we did seventh in the next page for English Language Arts as well, um, scoring seven. So, um, overall, I feel that, um, there's a lot of emphasis put on in a grades three through eight test. The teachers did a nice job and, and we just scored really well. And I think we're doing the right things there. I think interventions, you've heard about them earlier tonight, play a big role in that, I really, really do. Um, and so hopefully we continue, um, to do that.
How many years have we been, have they been doing the badger exam?
Just one.
Oh, this?
There was one in college.
Forward is actually, this is bringing us to forward is, okay.
Then the next year, it was something...
Probably.
As long as it moves, it has a, like, sentence as it goes along.
Can you take a stab in the dark and tell me why, why does a bigger school, why does, just bigger schools appear to be doing so much better than us? Just a one, just...
I don't know if they're continuing it so much. Some, some of it's going to have to do with, you know, services that perhaps they, they have, maybe what their curriculum has been over time. Um, also, some of those schools, like Monique and Littleton Cross Plains, um, I don't know how much diversity they really have in there compared to the rest, but they're, they're not as diverse like Saltbury or Ramona and some of those students either. And so they do a lot of different things, like, um...
Two things, one is that they have vastly more resources to have more curriculum and they kind of do improvements a little bit differently. So rather than like some of our kids who struggle having to be in the same class, they can actually take a group hour, 'cause they have so many kids, and actually really, really do some targeted stuff. And the second thing I forgot, actually, but that is a stat, just to help out.
Which we do, we're scared with the sixth grade. We actually, Andrea knows about a hundred times students in that sixth grade that are really doing all the rest of them, even though they scored really, really high, we even talk back to them all this year. Um, they're alive, but...
I just wondered what, I mean, there's, that's quite a bit of difference there. What, what does a big school have that we don't?
Well, Monique, it looks like, I think, they're, Monique for sure doesn't have a lot of factors.
Yeah, I would put in...
But do we?
I would put in also, again, the socioeconomic...
We have, so we have, our socioeconomic has changed. I believe, when we're doing the middle hall grant, I believe we have a middle ten is about twelve to thirteen percent. We're probably double that, but again, those are, those aren't, those may be questions. Those, those aren't, how should I put it? They're successful people that, you know, that are bold also. So how do we, these people are critically open to people. And the other, other thing you mentioned is talk about the seventh grade class this year is the class that's had a formal adoption. That's when, you know, when they were back in, to, yeah, kindergarten, that's when the, for the math adoption occurred, the first math adoption in kindergarten, so this is...
Look at track.
Yeah?
Um, then, okay, then I did the A, um, ACT testing. Um, and ACT testing, and this is going to be a discussion, I know, um, and my admin team are going to talk about it tomorrow at our admin meeting. Um, we, we have, um, we're below the state. Um, we have some areas that definitely need some work, um, English Language Arts and Science, more schools in, in math itself, but we still have forty-one point three percent of our students are below basic math. So, um, I think that says a lot, we're right at where the overall composite score was for the state. Um, and if you turn the page, I also did the same thing that I did with the badger exam and my, um, um, where we were on the average of the gap and rank words compared to the other Dane County schools, um, and so forth. So, um, definitely needs to be looking at how we can improve our ACT scores, um, what we need to do with the courses or, um, just preparing them in general, we need to add, um, prep sessions to get them, um, or that's in store, out of the school. Um, and then just giving them, you know, the questions. And so what you have to realize, these scores are all juniors that took it last year. Well, every kid has taken. So whether they're going to college or not, you know, whatever, they're, they're, wherever they're at, whatever classes they've had, they have to take what's ACT. So, um, that, that's different because before it was, you know, just going to college, you get outside of the school and you usually don't have a lot of kids that aren't going to college taking this stuff. So that kind of compares as well to the state. And then the last page is, um, well, the second to last page is, that, that's, those are the scores that we had, or it says fourteen fifteen ACT scores, that's where, um, those weren't just the juniors. That was anybody that just took it outside of, to get in the school, that's where we rolled it back. And so we, we definitely have some work to do. And the last page is kind of a tracking system of all the different tests and to kind of see where we were last year, last two years and where we are now, what types for us. It's really hard to track those, people who've been going through it over the past one year. So, um, overall, the badger exam would really, really help, um, and ACT, we have to...
On wise dash, there's two ACT scores. There's the score that Amy shared, and the second one, which is, so it's called statewide, which is graduating students.
Statewide is the...
Juniors, and then the, which is the one...
Graduates. It's called graduates.
Graduates, so statewide is the juniors and graduates is...
Anybody that's outside of the school. So even some of our juniors will take it again and back with the other score, so they have both. So are there any questions at this time? Are you seeing, I'll see your life, as you go back down later?
Just want to address it, I guess is the question. And how are we gonna address it, especially at the high school level? I mean, that, you know, let's finish class in a race. Even if you don't agree with the race, it's still a race. I mean, it's, it's a reflection of our school. People moving into the district, they look for things, they look for metrics, which stinks, unfortunately. Because if you have to take a snapshot of something, you just don't actually look at a photo and you look at what you think is right. So that has, something has to be given with that.
Anything else? I'm still thinking, we need to keep them back. These kids, once they get to be a sophomore to junior, they're, they're six, seven, and eighth grade too, so we have to really look at, look at the Cs or issues, uh, maybe just issues that...
We could do that through math. And then also, although we're not testing, we could say prior to last year, here's, it's getting a little old. We've got like one year to say, here were some trends that we saw in the WKC. Not, not ideal, but it's a map, map, map right now is our best.
But we do have ACT aspirant, our question was something, but it's still, and that goes there often.
In this junior class, we'll have taken that class, there may be some acclimation.
Thank you. All right, personnel, the motion to hire Daniel King as, um, non-musical director for the fifteen, sixteen school year with a requirement of fifteen hundred. So, do you have a second? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James? Jim?
Isaiah?
All right, and I'll vote you out. All right, we scratched two and three. E athletics, discuss possible action on high school girls' hockey co-op with Bear Lou.
This is the, this, isn't this the second? Or, or this one?
More, more than twice.
More than twice, okay. I know, I know what you mean.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move it to...
Second, whatever it is.
Okay. To put the co-op?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none.
Oh, go ahead.
I just think that anytime we have the opportunity to give more experiences and, Rich, did, were you approached by Bear Lou?
Yes, they, they actually are changing their policy. They are going to be such shared costs for a co-op, which we currently do in our co-ops. They're adding an additional two hundred and fifty dollars per person in place for administrative duties, fees, all of those things. So their approach was, are you still interested? Is it really providing the players lately, so this one, make sure you're still interested. And the answer is yes, we're still willing to offer it and offer the opportunity and you have that co-op agreement in front of you.
Has anybody given any interest in doing that this year, or, I mean, do you see anybody?
I don't, I don't know what's coming up. I don't know who would maybe play hockey. You know, for instance, you know, like the boys, not to compare, but I know there's some young men coming up that play hockey, but as far as young ladies?
There's one, so I know one.
There, there would be a four or three are coming up.
Got a little bit of time.
There's one, and, uh, you know, we, we've actually had more questions. I've had a couple of middle school girls inquire more about gymnastics than I have, uh, hockey. So that question has come up and I begin that, look to see what's out there, what's available, who's, who's interested in, you know, just kind of talking to us to say, you know, they'd be interested in maybe taking Wisconsin Heights on?
Cool.
Yep.